Hi. Welcome to the Salt Lake City Planning Commission meeting for February 12, 2025. I want you to take a minute to note the public meeting rules, which are posted at the door to this room or at Section D of the Planning Commission Policies and Procedures. If you've made comments on the items we're hearing tonight, we've received those if you've submitted them to the planner or your community organization. If you want to make a comment this evening, you can send an email to planning comments at slc.gov, or you can fill out a comment card, which is at the door of this room, so we can recognize you when your item of interest is being heard. Our first item on the agenda is the report of the chair, and I don't have anything to report. Next is the report of the vice chair.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Next is the report of the planning director.
Thank you. So we were asked to give an update on the city council's discussion on the R1 options, zoning regulation options, and they decided yesterday they were going to postpone that discussion until next week. So we don't really have anything to update the commission on at this point. There's also a couple of pending bills at the legislature that may impact what we do. So we're kind of monitoring that as well, but we'll let you know at the next commission meeting, we'll give you an update on what the direction the council gives. The other thing I wanted to update you on is that we have forwarded some names for new commissioners to the mayor's office for the mayor's consideration for appointment. So we'll keep you updated on that as well, as those names make it through the process. And I think that's all we had.
Thank you. I wonder when the city council hears the options for the R1 update, if we'll hear about it after that or after the 45-day comment period?
We'll update you right at the next meeting after they have that discussion, so you know what's going on.
Okay.
And we'll tell you that. I did forget one other thing. The next Planning Commission meeting only has one agenda item right now, and probably will. That gets posted tomorrow or Friday, or I think it's tomorrow. So it's a city-initiated text amendment, so we are, and we wanted to ask if there's anything else that the commission would like, if it's some sort of discussion or update on ongoing projects that we have or things like that, or if we just would rather move that item to the following commission meeting and cancel the meeting in two weeks.
The item that I can think of that we had discussed, that we wanted to hear or talk about was the local historic districts, and I don't know if you're ready for that next meeting or...
I don't think we'll be ready. We're working on that information, and we are looking at having that in one of the March meetings as well.
Okay.
Can we do our retreat?
What's that?
Can we do our retreat then?
I don't know that we'd be able to prepare anything in that timeframe. That's why we're kind of, February is a really hard month on the management team, just because we have to respond so quickly to all of the legislative bills and everything else, and most of those we have to read, even if they don't seem like they impact us directly. Oftentimes, there's little tiny things in there that reference it. So we haven't had a lot of time to prepare for those things. I think we also have our annual report, which is due to the commission by the second meeting in March, where we'll try to figure that out.
I'm okay in that case, then, putting that other item to the next meeting in March? Is that okay with everybody?
Seconded.
Yeah. Okay. We're gonna...
We'll just plan on doing that, then.
Sounds good. Let us know if that changes, otherwise, we won't come.
You'll know tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Now it's time for the open forum, where commissioners can discuss planning, zoning, and general land use items that are not listed on the agenda. Does anybody have anything to talk about tonight? Thanks. The next item is our consent agenda, and these are matters which we anticipate will not require a lot of discussion. So we have two items on our consent agenda. The first is a plan development for bricks on 10th at approximately 1549 South, 1,000 West. And the other item is approval of the meeting minutes, and we have minutes for December 11th meeting and January 8th meeting. This evening, we can approve all of those items, or we can move some of those items to the regular agenda. I'm going to open the public hearing for those items. If anyone from the community organization, Glendale Community Council is the community organization, would like to speak, you can approach the podium. Or any member of the public who would like to speak on that item, bricks on 10th, or the meeting minutes. Any emails on that item? No? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on the consent agenda and ask for a motion from the commission.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda from Mike Christensen and a second from Commissioner Scott. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll vote on it. Commissioner Mike Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so the consent agenda is approved, passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll go to the regular agenda, and the item we have here is a plan development in preliminary subdivision at approximately 825 West Hoyt Place. If you'll introduce yourself and present the application to us.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Russell, and tonight I am presenting a plan development and preliminary plat request at 825 West Hoyt Place. This property is located in the SR3 Zone. SR3 stands for Special Development Pattern Residential District. It's located at the end of Hoyt Place, which is a private street, and the applicant is requesting lots and buildings without frontage on a public street to increase the maximum drive approach width. In the SR3 Zone, the maximum allowed drive approach width is 22 feet, and they are requesting 28 feet. And their last request is to reduce the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 15 feet, and staff is recommending approval. Here's the site plan that has been provided by the applicant along with some rendering showing the two units that are closest to Hoyt Place. The building on the right is the only one that has direct frontage on Hoyt Place, and has a door also facing the street. There are 12 total units included in this development, and they will all be located on individual lots, so they can be sold individually. There will be a four-foot sidewalk that circles the site and provides access to the front doors of each of the units. And aside from those individual lots, the remainder of the site will be common area. All the units will have three bedrooms, except for this one that is circled. That one will have two bedrooms, because it's slightly smaller than the other units. All of them will also have attached garages. All of them will have a two-car garage, except for this one that is circled will have a one-car garage, and they will also all have a balcony on the second story. There are currently two parcels that make up this project site, and only one of them has frontage on Hoyt Place, and once combined, only a portion of this property will have frontage on Hoyt Place. The current design of the development includes a driveway that runs north-south through the center of the property to provide access to each of the unit's attached garages, and because of this configuration, it must curved meet Hoyt Place at an angle, and that causes the drive approach width to exceed the minimum allowed, which is 22 feet. So this is the reason why the applicant is requesting 28 feet. The applicant is also requesting to reduce the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 15 feet, and to make up for the reduced area that'll be available for the residents to use, they are planning to provide four grow boxes, two picnic tables, and some landscaping in the rear yard area, including trees and shrubs. This is a picture that I took of the property. It shows the neighboring property to the south, which is occupied by a single-family home and a detached accessory structure. This is the closest single-family residence to the property. It's about 75 feet away measured from the property line. This property owner has reached out to the applicant to request that they install a six-foot fence along their shared property line to mitigate any negative impacts from the proposed development, and the applicant has agreed to do this. The planned development objectives that are met by the proposal are the objectives for housing and master plan implementation. The strategy that is met for the housing objective is providing types of housing that help achieve the city's housing goals, including housing types not commonly found in the neighborhood but of a scale that is typical to the neighborhood. Generally, the proposal aligns with the goals and policies of Housing SLC and Plan Salt Lake, which support new housing development in general and also infill development. This neighborhood is mainly single-family detached on individual lots, with the occasional multifamily structure. The proposed development will provide single-family attached housing, which is similar in scale to both single-family detached and multifamily, but the housing type is not as common in this neighborhood. The strategy that is met for the master plan implementation objective is a project that helps implement portions of an adopted master plan in instances where the master plan provides specific guidance on the character of the immediate vicinity of the proposal. And the image on the right is taken from page 52 of the North Temple Boulevard Master Plan, and this picture is showing these two blocks that are identified as good places for infill development, and the project site is identified by Yellow Star in the eastern most block. So based on the information and findings listed in the staff report, planning staff finds that the proposal generally meets the preliminary subdivision and plan development standards, and therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves the request. And that's my presentation. I could take any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation or are they available? Okay. Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions about this project? Application? No. I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone from the recognized community organization would like to speak, or any member of the public would like to speak about this project? I'll close the public hearing. So the actions we can take tonight are approval is recommended by staff, approval with conditions different from those recommended by staff. We could deny it, we could continue this application. So if there's any discussion or questions for staff, you can ask those or do that now.
I'm prepared to make a motion. Based on the information presented in discussion, I move that the commission approved this plan development application, recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
Can I do a friendly amendment? Commissioner Shear, would you entertain conditioning it with the fence being part of it, because we've learned if it's not conditioned, it may or may not happen?
I am very happy to amend it, that condition.
Thank you. Commissioner Shear made a motion to approve. Commissioner Christensen seconded that. Commissioner Berry made an amendment to include the fence as a condition, fence on the south side of the property? Is that right?
Yeah.
And Shear and Christensen accepted that amendment. So we'll vote now. Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear? Commissioner Mike Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
And I also will vote yes, so that passes with the additional condition.
And I'd like to make the other motion. Based on the information presented in discussion, I move that the commission approve this preliminary subdivision application as recommended by staff.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision by Commissioner Mike Christensen and a second by Commissioner Krasik. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik? Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
I also will vote yes, so that passes unanimously. And that's the end of that item. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a work session of multifamily zoning district merger. So if you'll introduce yourself and give us your presentation, thank you.
Yes, I'm Aaron Barlow, senior planner.
Yeah, get your own mic.
Lucky me. Katie Lynn Warre, principal planner.
Sorry, just give us a sec to set up. Hold on. There we go. All right. Let me get this to full screen, and we're ready. Okay, what we have before you today... What's up? Oh, no, the button. Thank you. Can everyone see the presentation okay now? Awesome. Apologize. Okay, what we have before you today is a proposal that's one of the mayor's goals for 2025, to consolidate the RMF 35 and RMF 45 district, or merge them, if you will, into a single zoning district. Essentially, planning staff has been working on this since spring of 2024. We've been doing some research on the characteristics of these neighborhoods, what has been built, and we've come with a proposal here today to work through with you and get your feedback. Before we dive into the details, I just thought to give a high-level summary of what the proposal is exactly. First is to combine the two zoning districts into one. We're going to add a form-based regulations to these districts, to this new district. We're reducing the lot end width and size requirements. We're introducing design standards, which are not currently present in either district. We're easing building and lot requirements to promote owner-occupied units and to allow flexibility for development. We're trying to promote building preservation with bonus units and expanding zoning incentives where applicable. So just some background, like I said, I've been working since last spring on this proposal. These properties, you can see, the light blue is RMF 35, the dark blue is RMF 45. About 30% of these districts, of the properties in these districts are located with local historic districts, and you can see there, that's why we've highlighted them on the map here. So where do these districts come from? In 1995, you may have heard, the zoning district was completely overhauled and rewritten, and these two districts came out of that rewrite. Their original intended purpose, which is the adopted purpose in those zoning regulations, was to promote moderate to high-density infill, provide a variety of residential housing types, and maintain compatibility with existing neighborhoods, since a whole bunch of them were in the historic districts and older parts of the city. Essentially, they were meant to encourage this missing-middle housing type, which can range from duplexes up to a moderate-sized stacked multifamily. It's meant to fill that space between mid-rise apartments and high-rise apartments and detached single-family, really suburban-style development. So a few things we've learned about these properties in our research and what we've seen, the regulations really are not working. They neither encourage moderate or high-density of these properties. A quarter, only a quarter allow multifamily, which is three or more units per lot. The density rules at 5,000 square feet, they're essentially the same as our single-family districts, which is, you know, it's not moderate density, that's low density. Two-thirds are not wide enough. Historically, lots in the city, especially in the older parts like East Central, the avenues, Capitol Hill, they were measured by rods and chains, and three rods is 49 and a half feet, and the minimum lot width is 50 feet. So that's, those six inches create an issue where there might be projects coming in for plan development or other things, simply because they don't make that six inches. And then about half are smaller than the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and we've seen that this encourages building demolition and lot consolidation. This is just an example of the issues with lot width. This is a property in the avenues on C Street. It is 49 and a half feet wide, just over 8,000 square feet. This lot could not be developed to its full potential of two units, which is 8,000 square feet, without the Historic Landmark Commission waiving that 50-foot width requirement. It's also too small to qualify for plan development approval, creating even more challenges for similar-type lots that are not within historic districts. And this is an example, we tried to illustrate the lot density requirements in these districts. So as the lot gets bigger, you're allowed greater density. So this first, the largest light square there is for a single unit of 5,000 square feet. Your second unit, you would need an additional 3,000 square feet. For that third unit, you only need 9,000, you need 9,000 square feet, which is just another 1,000. And then each additional unit up to 11, you need 2,000 more square feet. So essentially, the bigger the lot, the more dwelling units, which encourages, again, that landbaking of properties, collecting more areas so that projects will pencil out. And what we want to see is, you know, infill that is built up and not out, and not clearing our historic neighborhoods. This map is illustrating the point I made earlier, that only 25% of properties in these districts allow multifamily, which is three or more units. The red there is where it's not allowed. Also wanted to point out that almost all of the properties in these districts, with a select few, are within a quarter mile of transit, which we'll get to when we discuss the parking requirements in these districts.
All right. So Aaron, excuse me. Aaron just went through kind of like the problems with the existing zones, so I'm going to kind of talk about solutions to those problems that we've come up with. First things, as he's kind of mentioned, we want to combine them into a singles form-based zone. This will just simplify things for both applicants and staff. We also want to promote infill and preserve character by allowing buildings and lots without street frontage, and also introducing design standards. We also want to work to prevent displacement with existing incentives like affordable housing and building preservation, but also with some density bonuses. We also want to encourage moderately scaled development that the districts were originally meant to allow by recalibrating the minimum lot and width-size requirements. We also want to prioritize affordability by making the affordable housing incentives more attractive. All right, so first things, want to change it to a form-based code. So we're going to use the residential building forms that have been created by the MU consolidation proposal. This will help promote consistency throughout the zoning code. Each building form has kind of a different impact that needs to be mitigated, and so we will have specific standards for those zones, or not zones, forms. We'll also be basing the number of units by lot size as well. So first things first, we have some general standards that will apply to all building forms. The first one is that 110-foot lot width maximum. That's, again, to prevent that landbaking in large disruptive projects, so we want more infill development, and this should help promote that. We also are going to have... We also are going to have standards that permit lots and buildings without street frontage, as long as like certain criteria are met. The goal of this is to promote more homeownership, so they can have their own home on their own lot, but also utilize our really long, deep lots. So we can build lots in the backyards that can be owned. We're also going to introduce some standards for mid-block walkways. Currently, the only mid-block walkways are required in the downtown, downtown master plan area, which these zones don't exist in, but we're in the process of updating a lot of our neighborhood plans, and they could have mid-block walkways introduced into those. So we wanted to just make sure we capture those if they ever kind of overlap with the RMF 45 zone. We're also going to do, introduce some bonus units incentives for preserving existing structures. These will be on top of the building preservation incentives that were adopted recently. So how this would work is if homeowner or developer decides owns a piece of property that has an existing building on it, they will get bonus units if they keep that building. So for example, if someone owns a single-family house, they have the lot where they could build an additional two units based off of their lot area. If they keep the house, they could get two bonus units on top of that for a total of four extra units. Whereas if they tore down the house, they could only get the three original units. So it's kind of an incentive, more units for keeping the existing house. So we're also going to introduce some design standards. So things like entryway designs with like porches, awnings, that kind of thing. Fenestration patterns with like percentage of glass on the ground floor and upper floors, requiring durable building materials, capping the building width, and also requiring step backs when a property is adjacent to a local landmark site. This is just an example of kind of what we're envisioning with some of these design standards. You know, entryways, durable materials like brick or stone, glass, that kind of stuff. Okay, and then to talk about parking, the current parking standards are the same as our least dense, most car-dependent zones, like the R1 zones. For example, in the current standard, parking standards for these zones, single-family and row houses require two parking spaces per unit. For multifamily, studio and one-bedroom units require one parking space, where two-plus bedrooms require 1.25 parking spaces. So the bigger the unit, the more parking space is required, and this disincentivizes family-sized dwelling units. So we want to kind of remove that, help remove that barrier by moving the, this zone into a different parking context, which would be the neighborhood's parking context. And it would require one space per dwelling unit regardless of the size or type. So a single-family house, one parking space, a three-bedroom multifamily, building, one parking space per unit, same all the way across. So to get into our building forms, each building form will have its own unique standards for like height, building coverage, and open space requirements, minimum lot size, the number of units per form, building form, where garages can be located, and the setbacks. So first off, urban house and two-family. Urban house is basically the same thing as two-family, it's just the orientation of the units are different. So they can be like stacked, top-bottom, or front-back, whereas a two-family is like the units are side-by-side. So just think duplex. The lot area for this form is 1,500 square feet, so 750 square feet per unit. Max height is 35 feet. They can have maximum two units per building. And then all buildings on the property can't cover more than 60% of the lot. Next is the cottage development. During our outreach with the community, we heard that cottage development is like kind of a desired building form that they would like to see more of. And so we tried to make this a little bit more attractive for developers by having a lot area per unit smaller. So these are going to be more dense than the other building forms. So 500 square feet per unit instead of the 750 square feet per unit of the other forms. These are going to supposed to, like, designed to be very small buildings. So that's why the max height is 23 feet instead of the 35 feet of the urban house. Also, we are maxing out the gross floor area per cottage at 850 square feet. So again, very small individual units with one unit per building. And then we're also going to require some open space. There's two types of open spaces the developer could choose from. Personal, which would be 150 square feet per unit, or common open space, which would be 100 square feet per unit. Next form is row house. So again, that 750 square feet per unit for lot area, max height of 35 feet, very similar again to the urban house. We will be capping the number of units per building at six. So if a developer wanted to put 12 row houses on a piece of property, they'd have to be in two different buildings instead of one big, long row. And then there'll also be some open space requirements, again, splitting between personal and common. 200 square feet for personal and 150 square feet for common. Multifamily, again, that 750 square feet per unit. This is where the max height of 45 feet is. This will be the tallest building form. If a developer chooses to pursue affordable housing incentives or housing, building preservation incentives, they could get up to 55 feet on top of that. We would be capping the number of units at 20 per building. And that number is up for debate. We're still trying to nail that one down. And then 50 square feet of common open space per unit. Okay, so the question that's arisen is why 45 feet? Because again, these are two zones. One is 35, max height of 35 feet, the other is max height of 45 feet. Firstly, we didn't want to take away the development potential from the existing RMF 45 feet, so we decided to bump up the 35-foot zones to that 45 feet. Also, 45 feet is necessary for a four-story building, which is very common in these existing historic areas. Those four-story walk-ups are a pretty common building type that we would like to see more of. And that's typically the max height for that kind of moderate-density, middle, missing-middle-type housing. And it also has the bonus of limiting podium construction. And again, the only building form that can go up to 45 feet is that multifamily. We're also, like is mentioned, we have some incentives for this zone. They, a developer could go up to 55 feet just for multifamily. This doesn't apply to the other building forms. If they incorporate either the affordable housing or building preservation incentives, they cannot stack those. So if they pursued both incentives, they could still only get 55 feet. So we're not going to see six-story buildings in this district. So we wanted to kind of compare what the impact of dense, like the impact of the existing density this would have, this proposal could potentially have. So we compared the existing density of what's on the ground now for all these parcels to what would be permitted under the current proposal of that like 750 square feet per unit. And we wanted to see, you know, what would the impact be? So about 35% of lots would see a reduced impact, meaning less units would be permitted under the current, under the proposed zone than what currently exists. These are mostly like these historic buildings or like those condos up in Immigration Canyon, which are, you know, they're technically in the RMF 45 zone, but they're like 75 feet tall, so they already don't comply with anything in this zone. Then there's the, about a little over a third would have a low impact. So basically, what's on the ground now would be similar to what would be allowed under the proposed zone. And then about 30% would see a moderate-to-high impact, which would be like a visible and significant increase then in units from what exists to what could be potentially built.
So we wanted to illustrate what this would look like on the ground, kind of based on that analysis. So we put together some examples to see how this would affect some existing properties in these neighborhoods. The first is a property in the avenues where there's four units on a 3,400-square-foot lot. Under the current regulations, only one dwelling unit would be permitted to be built on that property if it was vacant. Under this proposal, this, excuse me, but, under this proposal, up to four units would be allowed on that lot, essentially bringing this property into compliance. Yes?
So let's say that they wanted to build a four-story building with one unit on each level. Is there anything that would prevent that?
No. No.
Okay, so this is a neighborhood on First Avenue, which I presume is not, is mostly single-family houses.
It's a mix of, especially in those areas that are zoned, RMF 35 and RMF 45. The character tends to be mixed, a mix of single-family form, shaved houses usually with multiple units, and multifamily. Additionally, I have, when I was looking for an apartment this past summer, I walked through a couple buildings that were one unit per floor, four-story buildings. There's, I can't give you the address, but there are properties like that already in existence in our historic districts. Additionally, there are, you know, new construction standards for neighborhoods like the avenues and Capitol Hill. And there are design standards as well, setbacks, which can, you know, they do create barriers for development that, you know, we want that development to fit in to what is in the neighborhood. So it is possible.
This is a historic district.
Yeah, this is a historic district.
So there would be some additional standards based on that? What if there wasn't an historic district?
There would still be design standards.
Would it be Ninth and Ninth or somewhere like in that area where there's other?
Yeah, there'd be landscape yard requirements, different setbacks. There are a number of other design standards that would make that more difficult.
What if the typical setback in this area was 25 feet or 35 feet? And you're only calling for like a 20-foot setback? Or a 10? I can't remember.
Again, in this, in historic district, that would be a different issue, but yes. The proposed setback, they could, in theory, put in something closer to the front of the, of the neighborhood.
So they could, in theory, have two single-family houses that actually look like single-family may have two or three units in them.
Yes.
In between them, on a fairly narrow lot, you could build a four-story building, you could build a four-story building that comes farther up to the street.
That sounds expensive, but yes, you could do that, especially if it's one story per lot, but yes.
If it's in a particular neighborhood, it would
Yeah.
probably be fine in terms of finance, but that's not what we're concerned with. That isn't
Yeah.
our purview.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Another example, this is in the East Central neighborhood. This one's a little bit more dense than what we're proposing in this zone. There's seven units on a 4,000-square-foot lot, very good-looking apartment, but on a very small parcel. Currently, again, only one, one unit is allowed on this property under the current regulations. The proposal would allow up to five, which is not quite what's there, but it is bringing it closer to compliance than what it was, bringing it into a moderate density. The last example is in the Liberty Wells neighborhood, where there are 15 units on a 11 and a half square foot, 1,000-square-foot lot. And currently, only four units be allowed on that property. But under this change, it would bring that property into compliance, allowing development that has already happened in these neighborhoods. So just to recap what we talked about here, we're hoping to clarify these regulations in a way that makes it easier to understand, avoid those complicated density requirements that can lead to hour-long discussions for planning staff, make it easier for developers and for property owners that may want to add one or two units to their lot, hoping to promote infill and preserve character within these neighborhoods by relaxing rules and building locations, really encouraging new buildings in the back of properties, and requiring design standards when they do have new buildings. Doing our best to prevent displacement as much as zoning can by incentivizing the retaining of existing housing, and then encouraging moderate density by changing the lot requirements, and prioritizing affordability by, you know, integrating affordable housing incentives into the building types. If a developer, you know, for those, for those building types that are easier to build, like the podium five-over-ones, you would need to provide some sort of affordable housing element to that. This is just what's going on right now in our public engagement process. We have been meeting with community councils around the city. Sugar House, East Liberty, Liberty Wells. We're meeting with the avenues in March tomorrow. We are presenting with the East Central Community Council at their rental, Renters Resource Fair at the Megalos School. And we've, we're trying to gather their feedback. And then this month, we've been meeting with commissions. We met with HLC last week. After this meeting and after meeting with the community, we're going to take those comments from you, from HLC, from the community, from other staff, people in the city, including, you know, folks in transportation or engineering and other departments, bring that all together and bring a modified and updated proposal to you for a public hearing on March 12th next month. And our hope is to have some sort of proposal transmitted to the city council office in April. And we have met with the city council folks prior to really getting this ball rolling. This is a, for more information, the website here you can visit to go into more detail about the proposal. This is a QR code that you can scan. And, you know, you can fill out comments, look up your property, all sorts of things. And that's the end of our proposal, and happy to answer any questions at this point, and discuss the proposal further. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a lot of thoughts about this that I want to talk through with you both. Thank you for your presentation, and I know you've done a lot of work, so nothing I say is personal. But I'm not sold on this. I don't particularly find it congruent to say you want, the stated goal is to promote missing middle, and you do that through a high-density zone. I'm also not sold on this idea that, oh, you don't want to take away development rights from the current RMF 45, so you're just gonna up another 10 feet for the RMF 35. And part of the problem that I found when I read, the thing is that, and you stated this, you did a lot of review of what, what has been built in the RMF 35. Well, okay, so full disclosure, my street, literally just my street, is RMF 35. And you mentioned this in your report, which is true. A lot of these scattered RMF 35 zones at some point were drawn around an existing building, right? And so there's, so everything else around them is probably an SR zone, CN zone, something like that. You didn't really look at what exists. So on my street, I have a lot of housing types. I range from single-family homes to moderate density, and then south, the business district, you get your high density. So I have a lot of housing types that we say we want to preserve. And I think that's, so we have a lot of different things happening here with RMF 35. It's not as if, it's almost as if you need to separate out which ones this works for and which ones this doesn't. I think the solutions that Katie Lynn talked about are really thoughtful and remind me a lot about the discussions and the work that you all did for the RMF 30. Right, which has been well-received in that, I think there are, the majority of these scattered RMF 35 zones, that's an appropriate approach for those. And, and you may actually see some of your stated goals met. My problem is with the cost of land, right? Because nobody is going to buy land in some of these areas, the avenues, and then Sugar House and some of these other spots, and actually think, I'm going to build us a cottage, you know, with eight units, that'll be great. There's zero way that's going to pencil. And so on my street, that has a variety of housing types, the only difference is they're older. Right? That presumably means they're going to be a little less expensive. And down the street, I actually have a cottage-style, I think that's like six units, that was sold last year to an out-of-state company, who is more than likely going to tear them down and build something to, if let's say whatever the zone allows, because that's how they're going to make it pencil. So we lose existing housing stock that is presumably less expensive than what would be built, and then charging high-market-rate rents. And so I don't feel like, I feel like the solutions that you've put forward, like if you choose this, this would be great. This form would be great for this, this form would be great for that. But realistically, with the cost of purchasing that land and then developing it, they're not going to save certain things, because there are a lot of these scattered parcels that have enough lot of these scattered parcels that have enough land that they will go build us a big, high-density, 45/55-foot-tall building. And the other problem that I have with a lot of these scattered RMF 35 zones is because the way they were drawn, they are adjacent to single-family homes. So you could potentially have a 55-foot-tall building, single-family home, in, in some cases, in the same district, literally right next door to it, and then in other cases, you would then get a new zone, they say, behind it. Then you would get these setbacks that you have written into the report based on a different zone. But what about the ones that are literally next door to a single-family home that happens to be on that street, which is in the same zone? I don't, there is, I don't feel like we're going to achieve what we set out to do by eliminating all of these RMF 35 zones into that plan. I think it warrants, I hate to say this to you all, further review, in that there are a lot of these individual parcels and whatnot that deserve different treatment than to be lumped into. They didn't get different treatment when they were categorized as RMF 35 back in the 90s. It was just, this is an existing multifamily dwelling, whether it was six units, 20 or 40, so we're gonna draw this around it to preserve it. It didn't get any thought then. It deserves a little bit more thought now of how we've looked at the development patterns, how we've seen them play out. Developers are going to develop to the highest amount of density they can get. Now, you did talk about some things in your report and in your presentation that were limiting some of the types of developments and housings we may see. One is lot size, one is minimum lot width, but that density issue is a big deal. So if we harken back about four or five years ago, for those of us that were here, I think maybe just Commissioner Sharon and I, but we had right around the corner from me a parcel that tore down a single-family home and took half of a parking lot next door, and they needed to rezone that to RMF 45, and the city council agreed. The, the building itself meets all of the design requirements of an RMF 35, but they needed the 45 for the density. So we should be looking at, because you mentioned this in, you know, the form base of like, you're gonna have, how many, your lot size equals how much your density. I think there are things that we can do for some of these scattered RMF 35 zones that, parcels, that can help fix that, but don't then yield, lead to having a 55-foot-tall building potentially, 45 to 55 feet, right next to single-family zones, or little tiny developments that didn't know what was gonna happen in the 90s. I, I don't think that this approach is, is, is the way to go for blanketly taking all of the RMF 35 zones, because I'm really concerned with losing the existing diversity of housing that we have, that is less expensive, that no developer is going to keep or come in and say, at the price I paid for this lot, I'm gonna do something like this, even though I think it's desirable. That cute cottage development down the street is definitely got its stays numbered, and it's looking at a 35-foot-tall right next to a single-family home, but, you know, let's be a little bit more thoughtful about what, what's gonna end up coming. Some of these areas, absolutely this works, for sure. We've got, especially the ones that are clumped further down in downtown and some parts of central city, not all of it, but I, I think that these ones that, I don't think we did enough of a review of what's existing in those zones that we can find beneficial, that is actually helping with some affordability issues, because they're older units, they're smaller, but they're less expensive, and I have seen in my 25 years, one for rent sign in that cottage development. I'm sure I may have missed a couple here or there, but it's, those are the ones that people are able to try to eke out to afford, and I don't know that we've done a review that is thoughtful enough to capture what the existing stock is so that we don't lose that, because the stated goal of the form-based solutions, you know, is to preserve that existing housing stock, but lumping these all into RMF 45 is, is not gonna yield that. And I can foresee losing all of these older, smaller, and moderate, dense, multifamily units that we currently have to something that's then gonna be a lot, lot more dense, a lot more tall, and not in a place that it's congruent with what's around it, because we took no care in how we drew RMF 35 back in the 90s.
So I, I tend very much to agree that the research that's been done so far has been generally focused on why we can't build on these unsuitable lots. And that is a really great question, and a really great, and it's really, it's, the research is very solid. What I don't see is, and, but the solution is much more sweeping than the, than the very specifics of that research. I'm completely in favor of having lot sizes that make sense and that can, and can have a larger number of units on them. But what I am not in favor of is, is making a really jarring addition to a neighborhood or expecting somehow that that neighborhood is going to transition. So you're gonna tear, someday there's gonna be, you know, nothing but 45-foot, 50-foot buildings in something that's currently a single-family zone. So, and by single-family, I'm really talking about the form and not the number of units. If there is a way that we can be more particular and say, okay, these are RMF 35, maybe they need to be RMF 30 with the same kind of density allowances that you're talking about in terms of the, of the, of the lot size, unit size, and so forth, the particular kinds of, of housing that you allow there, that you already have an RMF 30. But that would be, but that, but that specifically around these scattered site ones, but also the ones that are sort of already in what's basically a neighborhood that looks like, even if it isn't, single-family homes. So there, it would seem to me that if you wanna make it into, that, that some of these would be better off as RMF 30s, still providing the opportunity to have more units, and some of them are fine as RMF 45.
Kind of where I stand on it is that before 1995, a lot of housing types were allowed in all of our single-family zones all over the city, and, well, what is now our single-family zones all over the city. And that was just 20 years ago, and these RMF 30, RMF 45s were created as a patchwork thing to be able to try to accommodate the fact that we were down-zoning the entire city. And so this feels to me more like a return to practices that are a little more sensitive to the neighborhood's desire and potential to develop in a little more of a natural way, instead of being artificially kept low by the fact that we are single-family zoning the majority of the city. So where I kind of stand on it is it feels like it is a blip in time, 20 years, where we didn't, were allowing less, when before now, I mean, before 1995, all of this was allowed. And so it feels like it, for our future generations, if we allow more uses like this, then we're able to let that be a piece of our past, instead of letting it hurt us all the way into the future, where we need these missing-middle housing types. I, I love a lot of the construction that we have had in, in our city, but right now, the housing that is being added is podium-style construction, and if that's the only thing we allow, then our city is gonna become very bland in the way that it is developed, where we could have these mixed, interesting, dynamic neighborhoods that are adding a lot of different housing in all across our city. And so I understand a little bit of reticence, but where I feel like this is a step in a positive direction to be able to provide the missing-middle housing that I think our city needs desperately.
So I'm gonna just rebut that and say, no, I think everybody wants this missing middle. That missing middle exists on my street right now. If this gets subzoned to RMF 45, it will be gone. It will be torn down. They will be rebuilt, because they're large enough parcels to do it. Because we have, because these buildings were built in the 1960s, the 1970s, right? They haven't, they've took out the single-family homes, and they've, they've done that. There's, what I am really trying to convey is my feeling is that lumping all of these RMF 35 into a 45 zone is not going to achieve a missing middle. And that I agree with the thoughts of Commissioner Sharon, that we can be more thoughtful about how to actually promote that missing middle by dealing with lot size, dealing with minimum lot width for developments, dealing with the density limitations the way they are now, which don't make a lot of sense. In that, if you have somebody that then comes in and can build up to, say, 30 feet, but they can have as much density as a 45 zone now, that helps them pencil it, that helps them make more of those housing choices. But if, but the way that, that this proposal is going, we are not going to see those forms that you've outlined, which are beautiful and great and desirable. We are not going to see those materialize. With the cost of land and the cost of development, that is not what's gonna happen. And then we are saying that we want high density in all of these zones around the city, and I don't, and, and high density in the way we think of it now, big building, lots of things. We can get more density in these smaller buildings, and the case I pointed out is proof. We have a building that conform to an RMF 35, but they got the density for a 45, and it's fine. We can, we can be more thoughtful and be more strategic in configuring some of these zones so that we do make it actually attractive, and so that we actually maybe do get some of this missing middle. But it's not gonna happen on my street. My street will just end up being high-density. One, one'll go, the next'll go, the next'll go, the next'll go. And these are 1960s, 1970s builds that are primarily full because the, the rent is less expensive, and I don't want to lose, we talk a lot about affordability, and some of that affordability is preserving the existing housing stock and the existing housing types, because when we see that go, we're not gonna get that back. We're gonna get high-market-rate rents, period. So I think you have a lot to weigh, but I'm not convinced that we're actually going to achieve the missing middle that we all want and need in the city.
I want to say that, shockingly, 1995 was 30 years ago.
Oh, God.
Really long time ago. It's shocking. I wonder why. Will you tell me what's the detriment of podium construction, the five-over-one? Why, why do we want to limit that? Is it because we already have so much, or what is it?
Pretty much.
Yeah, there's a lot of it. There's also some, you know, construction issues with those districts, with that, that type of build, but for the most part, it is, there's a lot of it, and it does not fit into these neighborhoods. Now, the, the four-story walk-up is very common in these historic neighborhoods. I showed you some examples there. There's the Dumb and Dumber House from the movie that's in this district. When you get to the fifth story, it's a lot cheaper, a lot easier to build for a developer, and we, you know, we don't, we want more creative development at that mid-rise scale at the four stories. And essentially, why we also chose four stories there was, you know, we can promote lots of density, but if you want the larger number of bedrooms, there's only so much land on a property. By adding that extra floor, it's promoting, you know, two, three-bedroom apartments, at least that's the hope, that's the only place it's gonna go. If you limit the height, you're down to, you have to limit the size of the, the units as well.
If, if the maximum lot width is 110 feet, does that, will that require some lots to be subdivided before they can be developed, or how, how does the maximum lot width work?
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but there are not very many lot, existing lots in these zones that are larger than that. They're mostly very narrow lots.
The Liberty Wells Community Center, that Ivory Innovations Project you saw for the planned development a few months ago, is one property, that's probably one of the few examples where it's wider than 110 feet, but essentially, no new lots could be wider than 110 feet. That one is existing, legal non-conforming, in a sense, if this was put in place, that they could develop it, but there would still be a building width maximum of 100 feet in that, for that development.
And that, that limit, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, what this would mostly be preventing is taking like four, or five, or six adjacent lots and combining them all into one big mega lot.
And that limitation would happen at the point where those lots are being consolidated?
Yes.
Like that would make it, at the time that they're applying to consolidate lots, you just say no, way before a building's proposed, way before any of that kind of stuff is happening. What are the, in, in what ways, if somebody has, wants an exception from one of the rules in a, in a new, what's it called, RMF 40 would be the new name?
45, yeah.
45 would be the new name?
Yep.
If somebody wants an exception to something on that, like, height, besides the options that there are, or lot width, or something like that, would they use the same procedures that are existing right now?
Correct. Yes, planned development or not.
Planned development or design review, or both.
Do you mind? A question I have is to the concern about displacing houses, under thriving in place, when a unit is removed, what is the responsibility of the developer to make amends for that displaced unit? Can you take, take, step me through that one more time?
For this proposal or in?
Or just like generally in thriving in place? Like, I remember when it was first being pitched, it, there was an idea that, and I'm not entirely sure whether it actually got actuated, but for a unit that, for a unit that is removed, the developer will be responsible for either paying an amount for, to the, to the people who are displaced, or providing a unit at the same affordability mark, either in their unit or, will you just tell, talk me through it again? I don't remember all of the details.
I'm sorry for jumping in, but I worked on that proposal, so I just jumped in. So you might remember it was last, oh, yes, I, so I think it was maybe last fall, but the city council did adopt this last spring. It was the Community Benefit General Plan Amendments. So that, that zoning amendment removed the, what you're thinking of, where if the, a property owner was demolishing a house, they had to pay into a fund or replace it, replace it, the Housing Mitigation Fund, that's what it was. mitigation fund, that's what I was looking for. So now that only comes into play if it's a zoning amendment. So if someone was to build by right through this proposal, they wouldn't need to replace the existing, well, it, actually they would because it's just a housing zone. There's no commercial in this zone. But if, say if it's a commercial zone and they're rezoning from a residential property to commercial, they would have an obligation to replace that existing housing if it's a zoning amendment.
I see, thank you.
At the beginning of your presentation, you said that there was a goal of this administration to consolidate these, these two. Is that, is that how specifically the goal was stated or just to simplify zoning in general? Or, or what is it that's your guiding?
To simplify the zoning code and also promote missing middle housing, moderate density housing types.
And it's a continuation of other initiatives that have gone through the RMF 30 project. And the, part of that included, in the future, we're going to work on these districts as well.
Yeah, I saw that in that text. I wonder if, can you speak to, have you considered changing the existing RMF 35? Could it go to the RMF 30 rules? Is that a possibility or is that impossible or what?
It's, it's not impossible. The priority was really to begin with the consolidation of the two districts. And it's something we can consider and come back to you with, but that's, and that is an option, but it was ultimately determined, you know, just stick to what we have here and avoid scope creep, so to speak, going outside of the scope of the proposal and adding, because you add one thing, add another. We try to just keep it focused on these two districts.
Is it, is it possible, is it a feasible idea to consider the properties differently? Like say the RMF, existing RMF 35s that have these features are, could be rezoned to this and the other batch could be rezoned to that? Is that a possibility or is that?
Yeah, that is a possibility. There are also properties that really should be RMF 75 in the other direction within these districts, specifically Immigration Point where they're much larger than what's allowed under this or the current RMF 40.
So one of the, one of the things which you've mentioned or has been mentioned before is the reluctance to do a down zone. So an RMF 35 to an RMF 30 would presumably be a down zone. So that would be an issue that would have to be looked at. But I still think that there's something that, something that as long as we're doing a zoning change like this, that being more specific about specific areas and the character of specific neighborhoods, if we're preserving character at the same time, I think in providing opportunities and providing greater density opportunities, I mean, I think these, these goals are not in conflict. And, and some of the solutions you've provided actually do that, but some of them are, some of them create conflicts. And that's where I'm really concerned because nobody wants a four-story walk-up building, you know, getting built in, in next to their single family or two-family or three-family, you know, cottage house, bungalow house. And I think that's where we get into, you know, a, a kind of recklessness about, about this that isn't necessary.
Okay, just to address a few things, I guess the first is this avoiding displacement of existing housing stock that Commissioner Barry brought up. Essentially, you know, that's what the unit bonus, that was the intended purpose of that is promote using a carrot and to try and avoid, you know, a stick in that case. But, you know, promoting, if you're gonna keep the house on the front of the property or the existing house, you're afforded even more flexibility. And then on top of that, there is the building preservation incentives that are even broader than these unit bonuses that we have proposed here.
So, you know, I think that works great for smaller lots. But when you already have a large, a lot that's been cleared in the 60s and 70s of the houses and then we have a mid-density apartment, you know, that's two stories and takes up a good chunk of land, that's not gonna be what a developer looks at that and does, right? So that's why I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know that we've really looked at what's existing in the RMF 35 that we're drawn around to preserve that housing mix that was there. So, yeah, I think the, the, you know, the goal of preserving, what was there? I just, I just think that we're, the blanket merger or the elimination of 35 into 45 is, is not going to yield us what we stay we want.
Yeah, so along with this here, we've also included maps with these same categories showing what properties will have a significant impact, what properties have a moderate impact, what actually have a reduction in the amount of zoning. So we have done that analysis to see, you know, there are properties and what the level of impact that will be.
Can we see that map?
Yeah, it's saved on our I drive. It will be included in the staff report, but I can pull it up real quick and then.
I mean, I think you've done a lot. I just don't think this is going to yield us what we want and lumping things into a high density. I mean, and part of the thing that we've talked about over the years of good urban planning was, you know, looking at where this high density belongs so that we can promote more of that missing middle within the neighborhoods. And because these RMF 35 zones that are scattered around downtown and central city are, are just drawn around an existing multifamily building, those, those are not necessarily where we want to see really high density pop up in the middle of nowhere in a sense. And that's what I'm saying is that I don't know that being every RMF 35 into this merger is appropriate. Some of it is and it's fine. I think there are a lot of these scattered RMF 35 zones that deserve a different treatment based on their existing conditions and the existing housing stock that's there. And, I mean, you can see all along, there's, they're scattered all throughout, right? Where we have clumps of them, that makes more sense. Where it's like this one thing or one street in my case, it's, it, it's not, I don't think we're gonna get what we want. And I just don't think this is the right approach for all RMF 35.
Yeah, I can see this is your neighborhood here on the, Amy Berry lives. Yeah, bigger circle.
It's on the west side.
Yeah.
But the map that you're talking about that shows the decrease, like the yellow, that we haven't seen that yet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to figure out how to.
Yeah, I wanna see that.
Presentation.
That'd be interesting. And I also, I like the parking simplification. I think that's a good move. I think adding design requirements is a really good move. And I also recognize that no one wants anything to change, but everyone needs everything to change. So, and when the goal is to change things, then change will happen. I appreciate that. Anybody else? We don't have to make any motions or vote?
No, we're, we're here to just.
Get feedback.
Feedback and we can provide those maps, so go ahead.
I was just gonna say, one thing, I, I wonder if, or if there should be some kind of parking reduction for cottage? Just because those, it's, I don't know. The number of units you can get in there is kind of at odds with, with the size that you're going for, especially because they're at most one or two stories and so. So I think maybe looking at a reduction for the parking for cottage units would be, would be one thing.
Great.
Yeah, that's all.
Thanks.
What's the max number of units for cottage?
There isn't.
Oh, that's just a maximum size? They just have to be this small and have this much open space?
Yes.
So they could theoretically get 10 or more if the lot size allows for it.
When you require parking, does that count, does like street parking count? No, it has to be on property parking.
Yeah, there, there's exceptions currently for proximity to transit and all these other things.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But not in this proposal. That's already existing zoning regulations.
But those existing regulations would still count here if you were close to.
Yeah.
And stuff like that.
Yeah. So we wanna look at, I'm just getting some clarity from Commissioner Barry. We are wanting to look at some neighborhoods and the scale, like the, the size of the homes compared to the property or?
That's not, no, not necessarily. I think I would like to see some review of these like single type of RMF zones to understand what is there. Not so much what has been developed, but what exists, what type of housing stock and, and variety of housing exists. And then what it's next to is what it's next to appropriate. The one on 13th East is next to a dental office. So that one might be fine. But then also the other side might be single family homes. I can't remember. So there are some where it, it might work, but I think we need to take care of like where that RMF got plopped. What's around it?
All right, we've already done, I've done some analysis where properties are abutting, you know, single family districts. That's FR, R1, SR1. And then, so I, and I've also, I've visited, we've kind of split up the city when we did this analysis and I did every property in Sugar House. I was given Sugar House, so I, I walked up and down your, your neighborhood and, you know, those streets, there's not just single family homes there.
There's a total variety as you move forward, but they're smaller scale, they're, they're also not RMF 35. But you, because I think we need to take some thought in understanding if we could, if we're gonna have the potential because you don't have to parcel bank in every one of these zones, like on my street, because in the 60s, they were already, now we consolidated and then they just took it, right? They're big enough. So is it appropriate that we see a 45-foot tall building and then single family or even small duplexes, small, those side box car type things? Is that really the type of relationship that we find appropriate? Because we're not scaling down at all and a developer is just gonna come and ask for a reduction in setback. They're gonna say, oh, you have a 10-foot setback in the rear yard based on this different zoning type and I'd like to reduce it to two feet. And the planning commission will be like, okay. I'd like to reduce that side yard five feet down to one. Okay. So I, the setbacks that you've built into this based in your report are great on paper, but we all know how that will play out. Is that truly the relationship we want to, to have that stark difference? And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have density, but we need to be thoughtful about where it fits appropriately so that we have some sort of a scale down. That's kind of the review I want. Does that clarify it a little bit better?
Yeah, we can get, get our group together and come up with some ideas to.
Thank you.
Can you, can you tell me what the definition of like a historical building that would require a step back on the property adjacent to it?
Yeah, there are designated landmark sites in our, we can pull up the map, but they're, yeah, they're just. Local, local landmarks sites that have been designated that way.
So it's, it's not individual buildings? It's if it's in this, in a historic district?
Oh, no, district, like the, the districts have contributing and non-contributing structures. That's not included. That's part of, these setbacks are part of the mixed use consolidation proposal and it applies only to sites, things that have been designated as a specific site with, you know, unique history. There, our districts will have sites in them and then there will be sites outside of the district. They're kind of individually listed on a register.
There's a list of like by parcel, by address of historical sites?
Yes.
And you can add your house to it if you want to?
You can apply. Want to go through that process?
Okay. And that's a city, that's city designated, not?
Correct.
Anywhere else, like you guys decide or something? Okay.
And then they're still subject to those same HLC requirements that a historic district would have as well. So they get the flexibility of the, the site and they have, you know, more difficulty for demolition and those extra protections on top of typical requirements.
Can I, I'm gonna send you an email and ask you to point me to that list, okay?
I will.
See that.
Yeah, I can send you a copy. I am struggling to get this transferred over from our, you know, the, the maps you wanted to see, but I can also have those sent out for reference.
Good. Did everybody say everything they wanted to say? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, can we keep going? We have one, one more item on our agenda. Good? Okay. The next item is in the other business section. This is a city code amendment initiation. I believe Director Norris is going to.
Yeah.
Talk us through this.
I don't have any formal presentation for this, so I'm just gonna walk you through it from here. But this is a follow-up to the request from the commission to initiate two text amendments, one dealing with fence height regulations in manufacturing zone and the other, what you asked for was standards associated with petitions to close or vacate public alleyways. And so we put together some short background for those. One thing I would add is that after we wrote the alleyway thing, we want to make sure, we want the option to also consider including streets in that too. So.
Including what? Street vacations?
The process to, and, and factors to vacate or close public streets as well. So it would just be all public rights of way. So if you make a motion to initiate something, that's what we would, we'd ask that motion. And the motions are just on that staff, that memo that you have. But if it can reference rights of way, that would, that would make it easier for us to, to do that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. To initiate, it does require a motion and a.
I'm willing to make a motion, but now I don't know that I have the right one.
We didn't update it.
You didn't?
Yeah, so all, all you need to do is in the motion where it says to close or vacate a public alley, just change public alley to public rights of way.
Okay, public rights of way. I would also like to clarify that the, the fencing was not initiated by the commission.
So.
That was initiated by the city.
So, okay, so the city council initiated a text amendment to modify fence heights, I believe it was in residential districts. After you had a text amendment back in, I think it was October, where we brought up, it, it was to address the fence height in a very specific location in a manufacturing zone.
The M1 zones.
And there was questions about, shouldn't we just do this more broadly to all the manufacturing zones? And so at the last meeting, we brought that up as something to add.
I thought that was initiated not by us though. It was initiated by us a long time ago?
You asked about it.
Oh, okay.
And so we, we're bringing it up now to officially initiate it.
I only pay attention to what I initiate. Everybody else is like background noise. Okay, I'll do this. Unless the commissioner has a question for the director. Okay. I move that the commission initiate text amendments that would modify the policy considerations found in city code 14.52 and any other provision in chapter 14.52 necessary for adequate review of petitions to close or vacate a public right of way. I also move that the commission initiate a separate petition to amend the fence height regulations in the manufacturing zones.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Barry and a second by Commissioner Mike Christensen. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so that passes unanimously.
So that passes unanimously. Thank you. And without any other business, we'll adjourn this meeting and meet again the first week of, I'm sorry, the second Wednesday of March. Okay, thank you.